Hey Brad.
Planting water.
Yeah, did you get those, uh, leave them over here? There's like all the rights are called.
Exactly.
Right, sorry.
Right.
I tried to get them, but I haven't saw it western. I don't see it.
Do you have any, do you have any thoughts on what I've been saying? I think it's one of these. Um, we're doing my bowl. After talk so clear. Watch. Also drive. Yes.
You like some water off the rock.
So I just need to tell the weather, say you get there. You can punch them up.
I'm gonna start running.
Yeah.
Let's say like this is an odd one issue and, and maybe. But maybe I can say maybe. In a nice way.
Well, the thing is, this doctor, I've said, I've been in it for fifty years. So they come by now and say, yeah, he's probably.
Well, this doesn't really develop because of years. I don't know if you want me to come out and, and, but maybe this is a real conversation.
Deal.
And you're on the five thirty panel. That's where trash and.
And.
The con. Oh, that's it.
Just a.
Good evening, Commissioner Hill.
Hey Brad, can you hear me?
I can. How are you?
Brad, can you see my screen?
I can see your screen. You should, you have an agenda up and you're just manipulating your volume.
Did you want me to speak, Michelle?
Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
I am not able to hear you guys for some reason.
Oh, that's not good.
Okay, now I gotta figure it out.
So can you hear okay?
I can now, yeah. Apparently I had to plug my headphones into the microphone.
Oh.
So you can see the agenda and that's all you see up on the screen, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
There's everybody's meeting alert.
Yep, better turn it off. Oops, that's mine, isn't it? Oops. What's new with it?
It's nice wearing basketball shorts, Commissioner.
I bet. I like it. You kept it real formal up top, but I know what's going on down there.
So when we do national anthem, I go like this, I'll flip my screen up so you can.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Because I have pants.
Hey, it's, it's one of the perks. I mean, there's not many perks to this, this meeting from home thing, but that's a perk. Hey Gordon.
Hey Brad. How are you today?
Doing all right. How are you?
Good, I'm fine. I have, had to go out and run up to Chelsea, but, uh, so I got caught in the rain, but other than that, I'm fine. Wet out there for a while.
Oh, man. Right now it's consistent, it sounds like.
Is it raining now? I can't tell.
Yeah, I think so, or, or it's still just dripping off the side of my house, but.
The trees are gripping here. Been staying out of trouble?
Barely.
Good.
Barely. Well, you can't get in trouble right now. You get arrested, so it's.
Oh, yeah, you can, but you gotta work at it.
It's just, yeah.
There's the big guy. Welcome back, Alan.
Gordon, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Good, 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 good. Awfully big agenda.
We're trying to limit, uh, the people you see on the video screen.
That's a good idea, most of what's going on.
Well, Mary's here.
My dog was barking, going nuts at the postman, so I'm gonna mute for a while just to make sure that he doesn't annoy everyone 'cause he's jumping through the window right now.
Oh dear.
That starts, then all some lads, pound puppies all go crazy. I mean, it'd be, it'd be a trickle effect. Whatever. The whole meeting will be in dogs pretty soon.
Hey Matt.
Yes, sir.
When are they gonna finish the right turn lane at Division in two twenty-three?
Uh, well, they were supposed to pave, I think last week it was, um, and then we started getting some rain, um, so it should be coming very soon.
Oh, good.
Very soon.
Excellent. Thank you.
I will be happy when that project is done.
I bet you will.
Hi, Len.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I kinda like having the agenda up on the screen.
Yeah.
Man, do you got spotlight on you?
Yes.
I can tell, yeah, because you're way better lighting than mine. It's like, you know.
I got, I'm gonna fix you up, buddy.
Yeah, hoping up too much longer. It's cheese, man. It's like.
Yeah, you're gonna wanna make sure you get him something that makes his tan look good, doesn't, doesn't like wash him out.
Pulls over today, so I'm gonna be in some color here, this thing.
Lights and camera are my business, buddy. I'll take care of you.
Yes.
Lights, cameras and birds. Did you just see my post I just made? The yellow, the yellow bird? Yeah. Yeah, that looked good. It was hilarious, man. I went outside and dude was standing there just shaking his head like, what happened? Was that he, he, uh, flew into the window? Yeah. Yeah, so like the first shot, you know, he's just shaking his head like he didn't know what, uh, happened, you know? Yeah.
Poor little thing, so pretty.
He was pretty.
Oh, it's much better. Donald.
Alan.
Mayor.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Taylor.
On this dreary rainy night.
It's awful. Still raining.
I've got five thirty. Is everybody ready?
I know. Do we have everybody on here?
I believe we do. We can do a roll call here in just a second. We're doing some visual things differently tonight and I'll explain that here in a moment. Um, but I'll go ahead and get started with my typical virtual meeting paragraph here for, if you're okay with that. Hi, everyone. To our virtual pre-meeting, I'm Nathan Bird, City Administrator. I'm gonna address a few things before we get started. Uh, the pre-meeting is a forum, uh, for discussion among commissioners and staff members, uh, but no votes are gonna be taken during this meeting. Upon the conclusion of the commission's discussion, an opportunity for public comment will be provided and other attendees can then unmute themselves at that time if they would like to address the commission. We don't know how long the meeting will last. Uh, if it ends well before our seven o'clock regular meeting, uh, you have the option of leaving this meeting and then reconnecting via the same link if you'd like to participate in that seven o'clock meeting. You're also welcome to stay on the, uh, meeting and stay on the line until seven if you prefer, but the same link will get you into both meetings. I know that we've talked a little bit about the phrase Zoom bombing and what that means. Uh, this is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. Uh, there has been an indication that these cases have been increasing in recent weeks. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we're gonna end the meeting and we'll restart after a few minute break. Um, attendees can also reconnect using the same link if that were to happen, which hopefully it won't. Uh, we'll also turn over our video, uh, to law enforcement for investigation if that were to happen to us tonight. Uh, we hope to conduct our meetings free from this sort of interruption, but we will temporarily shut things down, um, if that happens. Uh, Mayor, if you would like to call the roll, I can jump back in, uh, on item one.
Yep. All right, I call this pre-meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
All right, item number one is naming of city property. Uh, this is a topic that we talked about a few months ago and Commissioner Watson, if you're, uh, able to lead this discussion.
I will. So as, uh, early last week, I center on the, the proposed policy and procedure for naming of city or public property. Uh, I've, I've received questions from a number of you, um, and, and I've asked you just to hold those and present them tonight as well. Um, I'll just talk through this a little bit and then, and then put it on the floor for discussion. Um, the, 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 the main ideas here, uh, is, is to afford somebody the opportunity to name a, a city asset. This does not include a street, uh, but rather parks, alleyways, recreation areas, municipal buildings and/or facilities. The, the, the whole idea behind it is laid out in the document, um, of why we wanted that. And, and just some of the background of it is that we felt, uh, there was a group of, of myself, um, and, and three, uh, interested people that, that wanted to deal with this, um, and that we felt that it, this, this shouldn't be an easy task to do, but, but a very meaningful one for us to complete or for, for somebody to complete on behalf of honoring an individual or, or honoring an association or, or something along those lines. So, um, just in, in brief, the idea was that you would have to get, you'd have to have a plan, you'd have to have, uh, complete an application. You would need to, uh, part of that application would be a, a monetary amount, um, as well as two hundred signatures, just like you're collecting a petition to, to run for office. Those would be city residents that would need to, to sign off on that. So, um, from that point, we took it and, and kind of went through some things and some, some ideas, some criteria that are laid out in the document. Um, one of them is that if it's for naming after an individual, that it would have to be, um, after the person died for, and, and the, passed away for three years, um, and then the amount of time for the, um, the asset to be named would be a twenty-five year timeframe. And then there would be, there would be money set aside exclusively for the benefit of the city to maintain um, any kind of monument, structure, statue, anything that, along those lines that the city would be expected to maintain. So the idea is that this does not become any sort of liability for the city, but instead an opportunity for somebody to enhance or improve an asset in honor of something or someone that is important to them. So from there, um, you know, I, I know a number of you have questions or comments about that. Um, my expectation is, is that we'll have a discussion tonight. I'll iron out some wrinkles that, that are in this, uh, that, that might be in this document based on our discussion and then, uh, come in two weeks for a formal vote to adopt this resolution. Keeping in mind that any commission at any time, um, could adjust, uh, this policy or procedure as they see fit. So just because we set it up tonight, this does not, um, do anything other than, uh, set up a policy and procedure for the length of our service.
Okay, I guess I'll go first, Brad.
Okay.
Uh, I did send you my comments and questions, but thank you for putting this together. I thought it was a well-thought-out plan for, um, for doing something like this. So I, I did have some questions. Um, then you mentioned it tonight, it's not, doesn't cover the naming of city streets. And can we go over that? Why is that? What is, is that separate that I'm not aware of, that we can't name city streets without, like, the people who live them, live on them, they get input, right?
So, so the, our thought was, when, when I was discussing this, was that part of, part of our writing this policy was that there was the maintenance associated with it. And so we didn't wanna go down that road of street maintenance or road maintenance, so we just excluded it, uh, for that reason. It just didn't seem to fit. We didn't know the policy or procedure around that and, and we were thinking more of a monument or, or something like that, that, rather than a street itself. And, and the implications or, or the impact, I should say, uh, at like a post office or, or something like that. So we didn't really know where to go with that and so we excluded it.
Okay, I, I was wondering about that one.
Commissioners, if it's okay, there is a part of the code that allows the commission to rename a street by resolution and so it is addressed in the code, uh, elsewhere. It's not, uh, much of a lengthy process, but it does require, uh, the passage of a, of a vote and a resolution. So, uh, you are able to do that if you want, but it would be separate from this criteria.
Now, I also, uh, mentioned to you that we said facilities. Do you think that naming, um, a, a building or a room within City Hall or the library would be covered under this just as facilities, or should we be more specific? So I was thinking about like, let's say a company, Nike gives us, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to redo the part of the children's library. Would we be able to rename it, you know, that section upstairs, the Nike Children's Library? Or just using the word facilities, do you feel that that covers something like that?
I do. Um, I, yes, I do.
The rest of you guys, what do you think?
Let me ask about the number of signatures.
Okay.
Um, two hundred signatures, we have a, we have twenty thousand people. Uh, I thought the number of signatures was kind of low. I think that if, uh, you, there was a group of people who wanted to rename a particular building or alleyway, you would probably have a group of people who were passing those signatures out. And I just, I feel like two hundred signatures isn't very many when you're going to affect the name of something like that for at least twenty-five years. Was there a thought process that went into two hundred names, two hundred signatures?
No, there wasn't. That was just, um, uh, it seems like a pretty decent task to me just from remembering. How many signatures do you have to collect to get on a ballot, Robin?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah, so, um, so that, that was the, a bit of the point of reference of, um, around that.
I guess my feeling was in having more signatures, you're gonna get a, a wider feel from the community so that it's not just one small segment of the community who's, you know, making this determination. Not that it's a big issue, but when I, when I first read through it, that was the first thing that jumped out at me.
So, so I mean, are you thinking a thousand or are you thinking two hundred and fifty?
Two fifty, three fifty, I guess. I guess if you're, when you're renaming something like that, I'm thinking, well, there's probably four or five people who have those signatures and they're, they're going around and talking to people and that just makes them get a, a, uh, wider spread of people. But what's anybody else think about that?
I think that, you know, fifty on a ballot, I mean, you're essentially pumping in a hundred and fifty more signatures to, 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 to name something. So I'm, I'm okay with the two hundred, but I definitely understand your point. Glad that, you know, on the, you know, it'd be a lot easier to attain two hundred signatures, especially like, you know, as it's written, it says, uh, two hundred city residents, that's where we run for office, is two hundred registered voters, essentially, so, um, yeah, so I mean, I don't have a problem with the two hundred. I think that's, I like the fact of, you know, the application fee, so like just anybody can't go on and, and collect signatures and, and this gives them to get in the game, per se. It's a dollar make cost for maintenance. I think that's a good key thing, so we're not incurring any costs of, uh, infrastructure decay, so, um, again, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the two hundred, but I get where you're, I get the point you're trying to make, but I.
I, I just wanna make sure that there's a good cross-section of people who weigh in.
Right.
What about if, um, well, I have two things for the signatures. Is there, and I don't have it in front of me, but is there an age? When you say, when two hundred signatures, do they have to be eighteen and above? Like Alan said, do they have to be registered voters? Could it be my five-year-old nephew or whatever? So.
Good point, Mary.
Um, we probably should list something like that. And then to, to address Ladd's point, would, what do you guys think of keeping it at two hundred? But we have, I apologize, how many districts do we have in the city? Six, six? Okay, okay, six. What if we did, whatever, whatever that would break it out to be, maybe if we did thirty or whatever from each district? And then we would possibly have a cross-section of city residents. Um, you can only get thirty from District Four where I live and you, but you have to go over someplace else to get thirty from District One. Wow, I feel like I'm in the Hunger Games right now, but, um. Okay, uh, tough. Just throwing that out there, maybe to address Lad's point too.
Good way to get a good cross-section.
Hey, Robin, how hard is it to validate signatures?
Um, it doesn't take very long.
Okay. So, so what, how about a minimum of ten from each precinct? Rather than an equal split? Or a minimum of twenty?
That would give you sixty. You're, you're talking sixty signatures then?
No, no, I'm, I'm still talking two hundred signatures, but a minimum of twenty from each precinct.
I like that.
I'm okay with that too. Yeah, if you got twenty from each precinct and then the rest from any precinct.
Yeah.
Then you have a better cross-section.
But, but you have to be at least eighteen, correct?
Well, I'm gonna say, I, I think we should just change it to registered voters.
I agree.
Okay.
Cause I don't know how you'd validate anything else. You couldn't, I mean, that's.
No. Yeah. I, you know, I know I asked you, Commissioner Watson, I had asked you about the five hundred dollar application fee. What it was going to be used for.
Yeah.
Forgot to ask you about is what if, um, so there's a five hundred dollar application fee with every application submission. But if it's not, um, approved, what are we using? Is that money just still being used so that we can be cross-checking signatures and just all the, the legwork that went into it? The same as if it was approved?
Well, and that, and yeah, and that would, that addresses some concerns that I think Mary, you, you've addressed too, is that, you know, is that fee substantial? If I got our fee substantiated and I need help from, um, City Hall as to how to make that work. Um, I know Tamara, you have some experience with that related to the marijuana applications. But yeah, it is, it is labeled as a non-refundable.
Right.
Application fee. So whether the, the mayor's committee rejects it or, or we go. And for some reason, the, um, you know, city staff rejects it for design flaws or, or issues with it that way. Or, you know, I think that there's a, a matter that they can get more signatures if they come in with two hundred exactly. And, and, and Robin, um, disqualifies five of them, like, okay, five more. So, so, but I think, you know, if the project is totally, um, denied, that, that is still, it's written out as a non-refundable a- application.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner Watson, if I could just touch base on the question that Commissioner Roberts had about the difference between a facility. In a room. I did look up just the basic definition of those two things and I would probably advise that. You add, um, room in because as a facility. It's going to be defined as something that's designed or built or installed for a specific function. Where as a room is a portion of space inside that facility.
Another thing I, I wanted to talk about is approval from other entities. Like, does it have to go through, is it something that would have to go through zoning? If it's within the DDA district, would we ask them to sign off on it first? So should we put something in there that says it has to be, you know, approved through? Other, you know, city entities before it comes to the commission?
I, I would absolutely think so. I mean, especially if it's something that, well, one, it's already going to be on municipal property. So. Um, so that, that's one component of it. But then, yeah, I mean, it would, it would need to go through building or, or zoning. Um, it would need to have all the same. Yeah, approvals from all committees. So I'll, I'll try, I'll see what I can do about or how to work that in.
Okay.
So, uh, Commissioner Watson, I have a question about the, the naming rights standing for twenty-five years. So, um, it says the intent of the renewal is to afford the city an opportunity to review the relevance and condition of the named property. So if the property is. Just in disrepair, like it's, like, let's say it is a building that is falling apart. We're not, we're literally, that may not, that may not have anything to do with. The people that wanted it named for this person, but you're just saying that we could, maybe that building's going to have to be torn down or whatnot. And is that, is that the reasoning behind that? Or I guess I'm just asking about that. Because it may not be fault, it might be the building or it might just be the park hasn't been maintained.
Sure.
You know, God forbid it's not being maintained by our city, which I would hope it would be, but you, you know what I'm saying?
So, so the intent of that was more along the lines of if there's an additional structure, see a statue, say some kind of monument. Say a gazebo maybe, or, or something along those lines. That, um, that, that we want to be able to touch in, in either, you know, either remove it. Because it is in disrepair, but we also want the, to have those opportunity or an opportunity that, okay, so the. You know, Commissioner Allen Hill picnic gazebo is, is, nobody knows who Commissioner Allen Hill is. It, it, that probably will never happen because this guy's a legacy, but if it was, then we could, we could. You know, with good conscience, because it was initially drafted into the, the policy here. Um, we could remove that from, from Island Park or, or Millennium Park or wherever, wherever it is. Um, a number of you. Asked me in one way, shape or form about the renewal fee and you are right, it does not, it is not in here. The renewal fee, the, the expectation, or, yeah, the expectation was that it would be the same as, as submitting a whole new application. Without the signatures. Or I'm sorry, with signatures. Twenty-five years down the road, just to make sure there's still interest and relevance of that individual. No way, I'm sorry. It was without, the, the original thought is without signatures, but still with the monetary fee associated with it.
And so the fee, um, are we going to state another fee would be assessed at whatever year commission? The current commission, blah, 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 says, sets, okay. Okay, so speaking of renewal and all that, I did bring another thing. Uh, what if something comes to light five to ten years down the road and I take Joe Paterno, Bill Cosby? Um, there are a lot of things that have been named after them that have had to be removed. Should we have anything in there or does that last clause that you were just talking about cover that? It's not really a renewal, but. I guess. I don't want to have us stuck with a statue when we come to find out someone's been unethical or whatever hap- could happen.
So, so one thing is that, and that was part of the reason why we wanted to do it posthumously. Um, so there is some time after their passing, but, but also, um, a- again, a commission can. Um, can act on this in any way, shape or form to, to remove that naming. Again, I mean, it doesn't hurt to write something in here, a brief statement, just like you said, of unethical behavior would remove it. You know, what we don't want to do is have a, um, a commission remove something on a whim because they don't agree with somebody's. You or, or something that's not. You know, I mean, just. If he, if it doesn't align with your thoughts or beliefs, that's not a reason to remove an honor of somebody else.
Is there a compromise where there could be a removal clause that requires a petition to be signed? And then if you have a certain number of signatures, it could be brought before the commission to be considered for removal?
Yeah, but that could be, you can get in the case of, you know, especially with some political, you can get boots on the ground. Even if somebody doesn't agree with somebody's position on ideology, whatever that may be. I think people could organize. And get the correct signatures to have something removed that they don't necessarily agree with their same beliefs, so.
I think it, I think it just needs to be a commission taking vote. And if, you know, if it's, the, if a simple majority of a commission, um, believes that the naming should be changed. Hopefully there's, um, enough ethical people on a commission to not do it on a whim.
And we're confident that the five hundred dollars is, 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 is going to be enough to cover all city costs when it comes to paperwork and. You know, signature checking and all that.
In the next, in the next two, in the next two weeks before our next meeting, I'll meet with city staff or communicate with city staff. To figure out how to do that the right way, uh, because no, that, that was a number that we just thought would be a good number. To make sure the city remained whole.
Okay. The only other comment I had was, uh, the three years. Um, I did ask John about Hall of Fame and he says they're five years post. So just throwing it out there, what do you guys think of the three years limit? Is that long enough?
So, uh, I'll just share my thoughts off, but I would like to hear everybody else's. So, you know, many times the, an, an individual is going to be removed from public service or the public's eye. For a number of years before passing, and then this is three years after passing. So I think that there's, there's still a decent amount of time where. Um, somebody's impact on the city and the community, waiting for three years after passing, is probably going to be closer to. A number that's greater than five.
Yeah, it's not a sticking point. It was just something, I was just.
Yeah.
Pain usually is not, the individuals that, the majority of them are not dead unless.
No.
It's more so they retired, so they're still.
Right.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Can you tell me the other individuals that you worked with on formulating this policy?
Yeah, it was Mike Riley, Sheila Schwartz and Scott Westfall.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So if I understood and heard.
I have no idea what you just said, Alan.
Yeah.
Thanks for Commissioner Watson for teaming up with that group to get this, uh, draft to us. I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of time invested in that, so.
You're welcome. Um, I just want to go over my notes really quick to make sure I, I get this buttoned up as, as expected. Um, I got five things that, that we're going to address. One is to add specifically rooms. Uh, to the, to the policy statement. Second one is to clarify the number of signatures. Uh, making it registered voters with a minimum of twenty from each precinct. Um, verbi- adverbiage for approval from necessary department heads. Uh, renewal, m- make more clear the renewal fee and that it's going to be consistent with whatever the current fee structure is. Um, at renewal, um, and then to slide in a, a brief statement about the commission's authority to. Uh, remove naming, uh, for dishonorable actions.
Sounds good. Good job.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
This was very needed, I, I feel. Especially when we were having naming coming up recently. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, um, if we're good to move on to the next item, uh, we'll work with you, Commissioner Watson, on finalizing some of those details between now and the next meeting.
Good.
Um, item number two on the agenda is discussion of outdoor commerce and safe socializing strategies. Um, this is something that, uh, Commissioner Watson sent to me electronically last week, an article that he saw and it's obviously timely. I know all of you have been having conversations about what would reopening look like and what can we do in the meantime? And so, uh, Commissioner Watson, if you want to also, uh, kick this one off, we can have some discussion.
Sure. And, uh, Mayor Heath as well, um, jump in as, as you see fit. Cause, uh, after I sent the article around, she was like, hey, we're thinking alike, because she, I think it was a DDA meeting that she was at. Having thoughts about that. But, but, um, in, 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 all of this is, is, was just totally spitballing. But, um, I know the, one of the articles that I read, um, was closer to home was Traverse City is closing off their front street. Um, so affording more space for outdoor, both dining as well as, uh, for, uh, commerce. For retail stores to, to move things outside to, to, to hopefully safely and health, with health in mind. Um, give their downtown businesses another opportunity or a different opportunity for commerce. I, I think there's something to it. Uh, I drove through downtown a couple of times in the last week and, and tried to figure out, you know, how do you not close off all four blocks? Keeping in mind, um, I think it was Mr. Long from Gear Up. That came to us and it was like, you know, it's really hard when, when we close all four streets down for, uh, First Fridays. And so, you know, if we're going to take a, a bigger stance on this, um, you know, we need to be very, very conscious if it's a positive or not. Uh, in my mind, what I was thinking is, boy, you know, if, if you can only do twenty-five percent or fifty percent capacity. In a sauce, in a rice and barley, um, in Chalmers, um, Lotus Palace, any one of those establishments. What does it look like if the streets are closed and they can put some tables outside? Would they even be interested in it? I don't know. Um, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that we can control and, and within a time when we have no control over so many things. So, um, uh, Mayor Heath, I don't know if you want to add anything on to that, but that's where my mind is on this or where, where the basis of what I'm thinking is.
Yes, and I, and I even had added to Commissioner Watson that, you know, think back to the days of. You, you know, your sidewalk sales when you used to see that in, you know, downtown Adrian and in other areas, you would, you would see it all around Adrian. But where they're bringing their goods outside to sell. Um, because there, then they, they're not going to be struggling with that capacity. Um, so maybe they're using a part of their parking lot, whatever it might be. Funny enough, literally five minutes before we had our pre-meeting tonight, I received an email. And it is coming from our, um, Matt Schwartzlander, the director, the executive director at the Adrian Area Chamber of Commerce. Asking that exact question. He was posing it to, um, to me, but to also to the, the county authorities. And asking, he was specifically looking at restaurants, but he was, he was literally saying that he is getting approached about this. And he's wondering if we can temp- temporarily allow our restaurants to provide outdoor seating that don't even usually have it. Like get creative, whether it's wherever we can do it. And he wasn't necessarily saying closing streets, but just being creative. If we can get them to have more, you know, outside seating. Um, I do know that Dave Simpson, um, did comment on the email that said, you know, he'd have to take a look at it with the health department. And see, uh, what ramifications that has and if they're gonna, you know, allow that. But, you know, there, there's other people thinking that. It is definitely something that a lot of people are looking at. Because we're just trying to help these businesses get more business, get, you know, whatever we can do, so.
Mayor Heath, I don't know if you see it or not, Matt is on this call right now. So if, if the right time comes up, you might want to try him.
Okay.
Let me, let me weigh in on this because it's something that I started thinking about, uh, probably a year ago when I was in Mylan one afternoon. And they had a section of their downtown street that was permanently closed off. And I was thinking about the section of, um, Washburn Street. Between Winter Street and Main Street. Where, and along with that, I was thinking of the farmer's market. Because the thing is, people are getting, especially with. Uh, the pandemic, people are getting used to eating out more. And so, okay, yeah, we have all those restaurants that you mentioned, uh, downtown. If they're only operating at fifty percent capacity, people may still want to go there, but then they could also take their food to, say, the farmer's market. We may have to provide some picnic tables or something like that. But that street between Washburn, between Winter and Main. It does have access to two parking lots on each side, but those parking lots also have access from Winter Street. So it's not like you've closed off those parking lots, but you could make that a. I think in time, a really nice area to socialize in. And it's very close to the farmer's market. But I'm also in favor of doing whatever we can on Mommy Street. So I think we have a lot of opportunities there.
I wonder if if we i- if it in this idea, we don't necessarily close off the four corners, but um, if we can do it on odd numbers, days, not days, but like odd number of Fridays and Saturdays. You do the East West, so you do Mommy Street, and then the other weeks you do Main, but you still don't, you leave the other street open. So so it's not constantly, um, impact or negatively impacting people that need to have a pickup like Joe referenced when he came into our chambers.
When I was talking, I was thinking sort of two different things. I was thinking about addressing the need that we have right now, but I was also thinking about something that could also be more long term when I was talking about the Washburn Street section. But, you know, I I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Watson, about moving it around. I think that we, it's a lot easier for us to close off sections of Mommy Street than Main Street. I don't know what goes into that.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking to get everybody front edge time, right? So, you know, one week or or one point in time, SAS has access to do sidewalk sales and the Croswell and Farber's has an opportunity to do, you know, even maybe a a street show or or something like that. And then, um, as well as Chalmers can do their thing out in the street, then you flip it 90 degrees and then you've got, you know, Foss and Lotus Palace and, you know, whoever else that that wants to do it the other way. But, um, you know, and I don't know if it's a Friday and Saturday thing or if it's both. I don't know, it goes into closing streets, so this could be totally inefficient and and not a good idea. I I I have no idea.
But, you know, before COVID-19 hit, the restaurants were what brought a lot of people downtown, and you could go downtown on a Wednesday night and there wouldn't be any parking spots on the street. So I think that, um, I don't think that we should just limit it to Friday and Saturday nights. If it's, you know, we're talking summertime, hopefully we're going to have decent weather and, uh, make it available for throughout the week. Because this is a person who has eaten out three meals a day for about the last 30 years until COVID-19 hit.
Yep.
But I'm not real anxious to go back to restaurants, you know? And so to me, I I would like to go back, but I'm not so crazy about going back in. So this is definitely something that I've thought a lot about.
And Commissioners, Chief Emrick is on the meeting with us, Vince, if you're able to unmute. Do you want to just sort of talk a little bit about from a safety perspective, what you look at, uh, when you look at road closure requests and some of the thought that goes into that?
Sure, Administrator. Basically, for us, the main part is, uh, accessibility. If we're able to get in, get through, get emergency vehicles in and out, uh, I don't know if Chief Massengill is on as well, but uh, as long as we're able to get in and assist people if need be, that's our main concern. Um, I don't know that we'd have, you know, if you leave one of those open, that we'd have issues with crossing that street, you know, if if you've closed Mommy but left Main, you're you're going to have plenty of crosswalk accessibility. I don't think there's going to be any issues with that.
Thanks, Chief.
I do know that, um, that Jerry Ryder from the Croswell did mention that they're trying to get very creative just for, so that everybody is aware. They're even looking at possible, you know, using parking lot and, you know, and asking the city if they can be allowed to use part of a parking lot to do a production. Like they're they're, that's not a dumb deal. They're just looking at that possibility because they just don't know when they're going to be able to put the amount of people in a building that they really need to sustain a show. Because it 50 is not enough to sustain a show. She already said that. Um, I'm well aware of that too. So so they, they need to find different avenues and different ways. And so I I think a lot of the businesses will be very receptive to this, not just because, you know, obviously they need to make, you know, make more, make money, but it's just they're they're being very creative themselves. And I mean, I I feel like we can ask them, and I feel like they're going to be more receptive to these these roads closing if it means they're going to get more business and they can get outdoor seating or they can get their merchandise outside where, you know, we're in the perfect time right now because the weather is is isn't conducive to that, to getting outside. And so I think people will, and people want to be with each other and that way they can see their friends and be socially distanced, but, uh, you know, also do their shopping, um, go to their favorite restaurants, whatever it might be. You know, I I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to get a a feel for how the the businesses feel about it. But I mean, I do know the Croswell is looking at that.
Yeah, I think as we continue to open up slowly, I think that, um, you know, my business is essentially, it's always been 80% pick up and take out anyway. So not, you know, we have, we have a regulars that, you know, like, you know, the commute, you know, they stay in, you know, at the bar area at my soft location. But, um, I feel for these, you know, these proprietors when they, when we do open up, because there's going to be limited in seating, there's going to be limited in how many folks you live in your establishment. That being said, even if these individuals have, you know, the PPE, Payman Protection Plan, I think that they're still going to come in a point of restaurants, the margins are already small. This is not, um, everybody that's in the business understands that if you can pull, you know, a 10% profit out of a restaurant, you're doing really, really good and, you know, and majority of the time it's not the case. So, um, I feel for those, those individuals now, especially downtown, um, or all 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 over the city that are not allowed to have, you know, their business is like a Miller's, for example, like who's mostly sitting down in the morning, you, you know, a lot, we see the same folks in there. So anytime you get brainstorming ideas and get their thoughts on that, because I I'll be honest, if I was they forced me, I'd be a little apprehensible opening up at even 50% capacity because you're not turning the tables over enough, you're not getting people in and out enough, and the margins are slim enough. Is it worth going out and turning on the lights, um, when you're only getting 50% of what, you know, you're used to getting? So anything we need to brainstorm going forward, I think is important. But, you know, it's 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 not going to open up 100%. We all know that if if the track record serves right of what we've seen going around the country. So, um, it'd be very challenging, but I think anytime we give them brainstorm, we get some ideas together, get them on the floor and then, uh, bring it to those individuals for their opinions and, you know, and see where they're at. I think it's important.
Is is this something that we can, um, you know, the the logistics side of it? You know, it doesn't sound like there's anything that's stopping us. I mean, is this something to turn over to the DDA and maybe the Adrian Area Chamber to work through together? Because we've got short time. I mean, this weekend is Memorial Day, summer officially starts on.
Right.
Weekend, so I mean, some, somebody's got to put some legs to it and get some facts from the downtown people of whether or not this is actually a positive for them. It seems, sounds like a great idea right now, but in in all actuality, I mean, are they going to be able to get safe furniture? Or or, you know, or how can we as a city support it? I mean, do we have picnic tables? And does it make sense that we can put picnic tables down there or does that defeat the purpose? I don't know. But, uh, there's, I mean, to make it happen, there's a lot of work yet.
Um, the one thing that makes me concerned with the picnic tables, only because I've been going through all this training, um, at Santa Heike University, is just that you're going to have to have somebody there sanitizing after that it's up to leave. So who's going to be in charge of that? If it is not a, if it's not the seating of that actual restaurant and we have picnic tables like in a parking lot, that was my first fear when I heard that is who is going to be in charge of that because we need to make sure that those are being sanitized as soon as they get up to leave.
Good point.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just put a couple of concerns out. So as you, from the beginning of this, just, I don't know what the timeframe is that we're thinking of doing it with the Memorial Day weekend coming up and everything. But for right now, governor's orders haven't allowed us any, um, groups of public gatherings in any size right now. So even if we were to put a few people outside of a restaurant, it would be considered a public gathering. But hopefully that will be lifted in in the next couple of weeks. Maybe we'll start to see small numbers where we can do public gatherings. But we also are, um, don't have any authority to allow outdoor dining at this time because there are certain things that people are allowed to go out for under the executive order and dining outs, not one of them, just picking up. So that would be a concern right now, though I do recognize it may take a few weeks to roll something like this out. So those things, like I said, could change by then. My other concerns for long term is if we're passing this over to the DDA or whoever else to, like Commissioner Watson said, put legs to it, would just be making sure that we're keeping in consideration that the space outside of these, uh, businesses. I don't anticipate that the social distancing guidelines that we're under with the six foot distances and the PPE are going to go away anytime soon, even as we do come to more of a full reopen. So how much space do we have outside those businesses to allow for six foot distancing if we're putting tables out there? So that perhaps you can sit with the people in your own group, but be distant from everyone else. And remembering that that, um, just for the dining purposes will become that much more important because it's impossible to wear masks while you eat. So therefore, people will not be wearing their PPE and that six foot distance could become that much more important. So just things to kind of put on the table to take to whoever is going to start moving forward with these ideas.
Am I allowed to ask Matt to speak if he would like during a pre-meeting like this, even though it's not public comment time?
I think if the Commissioners will be open to allowing public comment at this point, it's up to up to you all.
I'm for it.
Yes.
Matt Schwartzlander, since you're on this call, um, if, are you allowed to unmute and can you speak to this as well, please?
Yeah, absolutely. For allowing me the time to to speak and, uh, and represent our business community. I think this is important conversation, uh, not only for just this outdoor commerce and and this strategy, but for, uh, the commission to be looking at a lot of the different things that we can do to help with the burden that is on our businesses. Uh, obviously with a lot of the things that are going on, um, any little thing that we can do to help, uh, get the businesses in a position to where they are, uh, getting employees back to work, bringing in revenue, yeah, and and different things like that is is a great thing. I think that this conversation, uh, obviously with with other people started, uh, within the last couple of weeks as we're seeing other communities, other states open, uh, and kind of what it looks like with businesses being at 25 or 50% capacity. Allowing, allowing them to operate outdoors, whether it's downtown and and closing, looking at the strategy to whether it's closing parking spaces or the street and stuff like that. But to businesses outside of the downtown core, being able to utilize, uh, parking spaces, uh, within their own property and stuff like that. I think is a great thing that that we all need to look at, uh, to make sure that businesses have the the resources, the tools, uh, as soon as they become available within, obviously, the the stay home, stay safe order and as we phase in, uh, and the different things, uh, that come along with that and and safe, safety within the health and, uh, the Health Department within the county. Uh, it's it's important that we're all looking at these things, uh, to be able to let the businesses operate and get back to some kind of point where they're, uh, able to make money and support their employees.
Thank you, Matt. And Matt has a a good point, the, now that he just said that, and I, um, just thought about that is the only thing that makes me concerned about having the DDA be in chart, like, kind of spearheading that is that we do have so many businesses, you know, in and around Adrian, they're not necessarily downtown and using those parking spaces and, you know, and can they be outside? You know, it's going to be, I I feel like it it needs to expand beyond downtown. So I don't know how we spearhead that or how we get it going or how. I don't know who would be in charge of that.
Hey, we are currently working on setting up a Path Forward Task Force that will look at, uh, not only just the outdoor commerce, but anything else that our business, businesses need to reopen safely, whether it's the PPE, uh, funding, other other burdens and stuff like that. But we have a, uh, task force that is being formed, um, to look at those things. We'll be glad to include the DDA, any other group that wants to be a part of that. And, uh, we will, uh, ensure that we communicate, uh, any of those things back to the City Commission as they come in.
And I know that it's, you know, it's, it sounds like it could be a long ways off, but, um, you know, I do know that some things have progressed, other regions of Michigan have not progressed pretty quickly. They're on a different path than depending on where you're at in Michigan. So like the, some are jumping pretty quickly through the parts of the phase, you know, like phase three or that now they're, they just jumped almost to phase five, you know, whatever it might be. So even though it could be a ways off, it could be a few days away because it, we don't have a lot of cases and, you know, you know, you don't know, our region might get jumped in those phases because I I'm seeing that happen around Michigan from watching. So I do think it's pertinent that we go at this sooner rather than later for that reason, just like Brad said. I I completely agree with you, Commissioner Watson, on that.
And I think when the governor announced the partial reopening of the UP in Northern Michigan, uh, today, effective Friday, she did mention that she may have other announcements later this week. We have expectation we're going to be put in the same boat as the UP. The current order, a general stay at home order expires on the 28th of May. And I think there are some expectations that some things will change at that time. We just don't know exactly what yet. But as Mary's mentioned, we are, you know, obviously bound by those provisions. And so that's the the key part of this is what are we able to facilitate and also be in compliance with the order? Yeah, we're we're monitoring it closely.
And I think it's just diligent that we are prepared and ready for the the minute things do open. We already have a plan and we're ready to go, um, to make sure that we're giving our businesses that opportunity to do as much as they can during this time. Instead of waiting until we find out and then we're like, oh, we got to do something now, they can be open, so.
Well, Matt, if I could suggest that maybe if you would want to, um, think of us or some representation on the committee you mentioned, I know we'd be happy to do that. I can work with, uh, Greg and others in our Community Development Department to look at our ordinances and see if there's anything we might need to relax temporarily in terms of outdoor dining and outdoor gatherings. I know everybody on the meeting right now wants our businesses to be successful. So, um, I know time is, could be limited, but please let us know how we can be involved with what you're doing. And thank you again for, um, contacting us today about this.
No problem. Thank you, uh, Administrator, and thank you to the Commissioners, absolutely.
Any other comment on that before we move on to item three?
So we're going to allow Adrian Area Chamber to take the lead on this, and that's, I mean, that's what our plan is. I I I have full confidence that Matt and his team will do it. I just want to make sure that we're clear from the, because, I mean, we can't take action. Well, we could call a special meeting if something came up, but, I mean, what's like from our side, how are we going to make sure this is facilitated as as quickly as possible? If there's anything for us to do.
I think that internally, um, Community Development, myself, uh, Public Safety, Vince and Eric being represented, I think we'll start having some conversations, and we we have been talking about this a little bit. Now we can take it up a notch, but I think we have some of those conversations, then communicate back to the Path Forward Committee. Um, I do agree that it's important to think citywide, and so, um, that's why I feel good about what Matt's doing there. Um, and obviously we can look at our ordinances and see if there are some policies we could adopt either at the next meeting or at a special meeting if necessary, that would allow us to be more flexible with what businesses can do, uh, given unusual situation.
Okay.
All right, well, uh, thank you all again. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Watson, for, uh, spearheading that. If we're ready to move on, uh, Matt, I believe you're here. Are you ready to speak on the engineering update?
Absolutely.
If if you wouldn't mind, Matt, um, if you could start with the road maintenance portion of your presentation tonight and then go from there, just given time, I want to make sure we get that one in, and we should be okay. But maybe start with road maintenance. And for the Commissioners, we'll, uh, Matt's going to talk about some ideas tonight, and we're going to put, uh, something in writing for you that we'll submit out to you to to refer back to. But we wanted to start this conversation tonight because there's a few items that could be timely for us. So, Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Nathan. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So we.
Okay, um, so we had recently put out for bed our paving projects this uh this season. Um, they came back very, very good. Um, we have roughly uh three hundred and sixty thousand in excess funds. Um, because our project prices came back so good, uh, so we would look to reallocate that money for some preventative maintenance measures. Um, including uh chip and fog seal or cape seal. Um, we've got a a select um list of streets right now. Um, we could use about two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that to chip and fog. Um, six streets, uh, that would uh allow us to extend our life expectancy of those streets. Um, and then also it would save them, um, it would save the city uh two million dollars in the end. Um, the next, the next process that we would have to do to maintain those streets would be a millinery surface. Um, in order to millinery surface those six streets, um, in about ten years or so, we're looking at about three million dollars. Um, so if we can look at maybe uh using some of these preventative maintenance techniques, um, such as chip and fog seal. Um, we could spend a a fraction of that cost and prolong the life expectancy of our streets. So we're looking um for your approval to reallocate some funds um in order to do that.
These access, actually, from when um the bids went out, they came in lower than you than you projected, is that what I'm understanding this right?
That's correct, yes.
In the in the the service that you want to provide or the 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 treatment you want to do, that's the same thing that we did on Riverside a few years ago?
That that is a chip and fog seal, correct?
Okay, so so, I mean, we got some heat from fellow commissioners, um, as well as the city people, uh, residents. I I I think it was fine, um, but we need to be very, we need to up our communication on that. Um, and and you probably, I mean, you took more heat than any of us did, but um, but we just need to up our communication on that to make sure people understand what's going on, when it's going to happen. To avoid the street, I mean, Commissioner Help had to get his truck detailed because he went on it um and and had cars stuck to it, I remember that. Um, at the time, Commissioner Valentine had a similar situation, and so, um, again, I think communication on this, it's cheap, but it's very effective. As to what's going on, when it's happening i- i- in in what people can do to avoid damage to their personal property.
Absolutely.
Matt, where do these six streets fall on the timeline um that we've been given on streets?
They they are not even on that list, so with preventative maintenance, we tried to attack the streets before they get too bad. Um, these are probably um in the mid to higher range, so we can prolong those streets from getting worse.
Okay.
Matt, could you speak to, um, I think if Mr. Watson mentioned it was Riverside that was chipping fog seal? How how is that holding up a couple of years later? And I mean, obviously, you're comfortable with it, but I know when we first talked about it, I wasn't super comfortable with it. And so how how is, what's the evidence a little bit down the road in terms of how that uh level of maintenance is 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 working in the city?
Yeah, it's it's actually been very good. Uh, we we chipped and fogged um quite a few streets last time. Riverside, um, Sand Creek Highway, Winter Street, uh, Black of Church Street, Broad Street, they're all holding up quite well. Um, our goal is to seal all the cracks, um, and then put a a new wearing surface over top of that. Um, so we can prevent any water damage from getting inside and and um in turn creating the potholes that we see. Um, so our goal would be to, um, again, seal any um any open cracks. Um, prevent any water damage from seeping into the streets. Uh, honestly, in some of our streets, I'm not sure that we've seen cracks reappear in the ones that we've chipped and fog sealed already. So it's a it's a very good process and very, very good for the money.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we put out to bed for a certain amount, came in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than we thought. Do we, do you know why that would be? Just curious, I don't know if you know why.
We put a lot of our streets together, um, in the past, we hadn't, we've kind of bid them separately. We put a lot of our projects together and it's a very large quantity because we had more money budgeted for it. Um, so it's a large quantity of of paving and we just get that much better.
Perfect.
Prices when we uh.
Okay, so this is in our budget. We're just going to reallocate the funds from one street essentially to six other streets. And that leaves us with about a hundred thousand dollars not not specifically allocated. Cause I I wrote down, we were saving about three hundred and sixty thousand and for six streets, it was two hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, it rough, it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we'd be saving about a hundred thousand just to be on the safe side.
Okay, and that we would just.
Money would be, right, it would go back into our our fund balance, our savings account.
Okay, thank you for going over those figures.
Matt, what streets are those?
Uh, so I'm gonna go down the list here, um, it's Sienna Heights from Maine to the city limits. Uh, College Ave from Madison to Church. Michigan Street from Locust to Wabash, Wabash from Michigan to Mami. Church Street from Tecumseh to Gulf and Merrick Street from Maine to the bridge. So we're kind of all through town.
Matt, could you um include that list in your um presentation or whatever you're gonna give, send us? So that we can keep a record of that.
Yeah, I will, I'll send this uh this out to you guys after the meeting's over.
If I can uh just ask about the process, Matt, so, you know, we're uh, I don't know, five or six weeks away from the end of the fiscal year. And this would be this fiscal year project. We're confident that we can bid this out and get a contract in place between now and the end of June, and how quickly do you think the work could be done?
Um, I'm confident we can get uh this bid and get a contract signed uh to get the work done. I'm not so confident it'll be done before June thirty. Um, since we are bidding it later in the year, um, a lot of contractors are already busy and they have their schedules set. Um, but if we could um carry forward that money, if we could get it done before the fall.
And if we didn't move forward with the maintenance that you're recommending, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars would stay in our fund balance and could just be utilized towards other projects next year?
That is correct, yeah.
So your goal is to uh keep these six roads from worsening to save money down the road?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. If the commission uh is is okay with it, we could put together a written proposal. Uh, we would probably need to get authorization at the next meeting and, I mean, realistically, uh, to try to get this in yet this fiscal year. And so if the commission's comfortable with that, we could put something in the next packet for you to review. That would go into detail about how we would communicate with uh area residents about this, uh, the method of the maintenance, as well as the roads and the cost. Thank you.
So if there's, there's no more discussion on that, um, I do have a couple of other items here. Um, if you guys are aware, our solid waste fund has taken a a pretty big hit over the last couple of years. Um, in order to try and right that ship, we're looking at a couple of different ways and to um generate some revenue. Um, and save and improve some savings, but also keeping uh costs low for our residents. Um, we're looking to, looking at the option to um assess annually rather than quarterly. Currently, as you guys know, we assess trash bills quarterly, um, it's thirty dollars a quarter. Uh, we would look to only assess uh for a hundred and twenty dollars. Um. For the time being, uh, that will roughly save the save our budget about ten thousand dollars a year just in postage alone. Um, we currently spend countless man hours um on sending bills out. Um, answering phone calls regarding what the bills are. This would save city staff and time and uh and money tremendously. Um, so just that alone would save save us some money, but we're also looking to, in the next couple of years. If this works out to invoice them annually, we would look to put it on our tax bill. Um, that would again save so save the um, save the city time and money and the source of um employee hours.
Well, Matt, what time are you, what time of year right now are you looking at if you did go to annually as opposed to quarterly? Um, just, you know, thinking as someone that uh used to be a single mom paying my tax bill in the summer that was extremely high. And like I I would be stressed if I had extra fees tacked on near that time.
Sure, so we would start it off, and I know it's poor timing at the moment. Um, we would look to get bills out um in August and then give them ninety days to pay. So they could pay up till the end of October. Um. We'll we'll be super lenient with with residents, again, their cost is not going up. Um, but in turn, this will allow us to save money in our account, um, which will hopefully decrease costs in the end.
So Matt, the the, so I understand the bill is going to be put in with the August tax bill, but not one amount. Is that, is that what I heard?
For the for the next uh year or two, um, it'll kind of be, we'll call it the trial period. Um, it would be assessed completely separate from the taxes, its own separate bill.
Okay.
In two years, if this works out fine, we we might look to add it to the taxes.
Okay.
Matt, what's the chance of just sticking the trash bill and the recycling bills in with water bills?
Um. It's an option, but it's not, the water bill sometimes send out a lot more um information. Um, it, we would kind of be on their schedule rather than than our schedule. Um, so it might kind of shift um revenues from time to time.
Okay, but I mean, I mean, if we're just looking to save postage, that's a.
Pretty, yeah, that's a good place to look, yeah.
It it would.
Yeah, we. Waste fund, why, I mean, I remember like, uh, when I first got in the city commission, it was almost four hundred thousand dollars in cash holder. What, is it because of the spring cleanups going back to back? Is that why it got completed like that?
Yeah, that's that's exactly what it was.
You remember we uh, we had to announce that we weren't going to be able to do a spring cleanup this year and it got lost in the COVID news. And then uh people started to realize again that we weren't able to do that, and so we fielded some calls about it, but that is the reason. That's an expensive program and we'd like to be able to do it, but there's just no way we could afford to do that again this year. Um, one thing I want to mention about the water bills is we have to be careful that we don't increase that postage. There's a very little bit of extra that can be put in uh with the water bill before suddenly their postage goes up. And so we'd want to make sure that, and and we can look into that, I think that's a good idea, but we just want to make sure that we don't save postage in one department in order to pay more in another department. But definitely an option we can talk about with with Will and Utilities. And so the negative here, Matt, for the resident is they're asking to be paid, they're being asked to pay a hundred and twenty dollars, but we're giving them three times longer to pay that, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, yep.
But it doesn't affect the total amount.
No.
Pay, so I mean, um, I'm on board with, I mean, if, I mean, we go just try it for a year or so or two and then and then if we get. Too much, too many issues coming about it, we can always go back, but I mean, um, that's a lot of money for postage. I mean, I don't, I I ducked it automatically, so I don't have to worry about it, but I know a lot of folks can't do that, so I I totally understand that, I'm sympathetic towards that, so.
The, just the coordination and, you know, the record keeping for three, three times a year has got to be massive. So anything we can do to not have that, and it'll help with any errors too, that we may have made on our end.
I just feel we really need to communicate that over and over and over again and really get it out there. Um, cause I I see it being, we didn't know this was gonna happen, why are you doing this now? You know, I it that, it, I just really cannot emphasize enough how much we really have to get that out there and communicate it. And I I'm gonna tell you, I'm somebody that gets a water bill and I'm the one, probably one of the worst people to read that extra thing in my water bill. Cause I just look at my water bill and go, okay, I gotta pay my water bill and I forget there was another piece of paper in there giving me a communication. So I I don't feel like that's necessarily the right communication to have it inside there, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but.
Does it have to go on a separate piece of paper? I mean, there's a lot of space on a water bill.
Yeah, that's something that I think we researched, it it may not have to, we'd have to just redesign.
So additionally, with the solid waste fund, um, I've also rewritten the um compost site uses policy. Um, currently, we only allow residents uh to use the compost site or um. More businesses, they can pay a hundred dollars to get a compost sticker and they can use the site as well. Um, I'm looking to extend that to our neighboring townships and cities. Um, just to provide those services, but also increase some of our revenue. Um, I get calls um quite frequently asking if if someone from Madison Township can come and and use our site. Um, I put together a fee schedule, um, which I will also send out after this meeting is over, um, just for a review. And hopefully we can, um, again, increase our revenues so we can keep our costs low for our residents. Um, that's, that's really my main goal here, I'm just looking at different avenues to uh to do that.
So how will those fee structures be scheduled for uh non-city residents?
Uh, so it's like a hundred dollars um to come get a permit and they can use the site as much as they want. If they want delivery, we can deliver with a five mile radius. Um, again, it's, I have all this out in a memo and I can send that out, it'll, it'll be easy to uh for you guys to see, um, rather than me explaining it to you.
Good idea.
Mm-hmm.
As long as it's not gonna cost the city any funds, I'm good with it.
And and I don't believe, we might see um some additional funding in uh compost, um, turning and compost maintenance. But I think the the revenue that we bring in for it would um. Would balance out plus bring in some additional revenue, so.
That's something we could track over a year or two, and if if it's actually costing the city funds, then we just don't continue it.
Exactly, yep.
Hey, Matt, is the supply of compost plentiful I uh for our city residents?
It it is right now, yes, and and again, like Mary just said, we can try it for a year. If we find out that our residents are not getting um the compost they need, then then we'll have to uh, we'll have to withdraw what we uh. Allow businesses to to take.
Makes sense to me.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then uh the last item I have is um, a private group has reached out and um in hopes to extend the Quanis Trail. Um, across South Maine, um, there was, there were talks about doing a bridge under, or not a bridge, a tunnel underneath South Maine. Um, they kind of have scrapped that idea for the time being and they want to extend the trail. Um, I think the hope is to extend the trail and then M dot might look at it at that point with um residents crossing. So just to give you guys a heads up, um, they may want to discuss um moving forward in a pre-meeting coming up soon. Um, but they they do have plans and some private funding in place um in order to do that.
Do you know how far out that they're planning to extend it at this point?
Uh, to Division Street.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sounds good.
So that is all I had, if you guys have any questions, uh, let me know.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I will turn it over to you for number four, if anyone has other items as time permits.
Commissioners, do you have anything that? Um, one thing that Nathan and I just talked about a little bit before the pre-meeting today is. Um, you know, since it is public knowledge and it's been in the newspaper and everywhere else, but we do not have an official resignation yet of Nathan. And so therefore can accept a resignation, because we don't have one yet and, you know, to move forward from there. But how do we all feel about having a special meeting? I'd like to, um, Nathan and I were talking about that and he had kind of asked around too about um looking, the way that it is written. It that once we receive the resignation, it does say that we're supposed to accept that in a very. that once we receive the resignation, it does say that we're supposed to accept that in a very, it doesn't really give us an exact timeframe, but it implies that we need to do it very quickly. So we are expecting, and Nathan, you can speak to this since we just talked, but we are expecting to receive that in the next day or so. But, you know, we do have to make, if we do a special meeting, we do have to allow the 18 hours to have it posted. So, you know, looking at the possibility of, you know, maybe having a special meeting Thursday, I don't know if that works for everyone. Nathan, do you want to address this, since you and I were both talking about that?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank the commissioners for how kind you've been to me, dealing with this issue in the last week or so. I really do appreciate the way you've handled it. I have not resigned yet. I haven't signed my formal notice of resignation. I do think that in the next 24 to 48 hours, I will likely be doing that. And then one of the things that we could do in a special meeting is you could act on that at that time. But then you could also publicly address, if you're ready, what the process would look like to move forward via, you know, a search or whatever you choose to do as the commission. And so realistically, the earliest that could probably happen would be Thursday. And then if it can happen, then it's a holiday weekend, and we're Memorial Day, Monday. And so what the charter says is that it should be acted upon immediately. But that's not really possible, because you can't, you can't do it any shorter than what you can notice a special meeting for anyway. So it's really up to the commission on how you handle it, but I didn't want to give you an update on where we're at with that. And so electronically, I would send out a resignation notice that would start that 60-day clock for me. I'll be here for the next two months. And then when you act on it and how you choose to discuss what you want to do next would be part of a special meeting, if you're agreeable to meet that way.
I can meet Thursday, you know, that's the soonest time we can meet. I think that we should be quick. Seeing that I'm pretty sure that, just my position is that the process is pretty much laid out for us. I think the sooner that, because once he sends his resignation, the clock starts.
Yep.
And so once we get that, you know, we can do it, we can discuss the process. And if anybody wants to add anything, kind of like referencing your email today, and just go that route. I think the quicker we act, we strike, and then we start the process, you know.
Do it, the fellow commissioners and mayor, do you guys have availability, like midday, to take care of this, rather than in the evening on Thursday? Or do we need to go to the evening?
I'm fine anytime.
I have to be at something for my job at 4:30 that's going to require that I actually am, like, leaving town for a little bit. So more, the earlier in the day, the better. But I mean, if I have to do it, well, you know, for my phone while driving, I can too.
Oh, that's a bad idea.
No, I can make it work, so.
Well, you can. Sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Roberts.
Okay.
I was just going to say, you can, you can schedule the meeting for any time you like, as long as we have an 18-hour notice of it. And so it could be eight o'clock in the morning, or nine o'clock in the morning, or eight o'clock at night, if you like. I mean, it's really up to whatever would work in your schedules. But yeah, you're certainly free to, it would of course be via the same platform that we're using tonight. So it'd be a public meeting as well, that people could participate in if they chose to.
I have a scheduled meeting at my bank at 11:00 on Thursday, but other than that, I'm free. So, and since we can't just walk in, we have to have appointments. And I'd rather not reschedule it if possible. Can be rescheduled, but I'd rather not.
I've already communicated both to the mayor and administrator that I'm having surgery on Wednesday, and I'm likely to be zooming from a hospital bed if we have to do it on Thursday or Friday. I don't necessarily have a problem with, other than I might be uncomfortable. But I, you know, I got it, it's dependent upon whether the hospital's got an internet service. So I'll see what I can do.
Mary, do you have any idea what you're looking at for a timeframe, like when you would be available?
Yeah, it won't, it's just, we have to sign some papers. So I can't imagine I'll be gone from 10:45 to 11:30. I can't imagine it would, literally, they have to look at our licenses, I have to sign some forms and drive home. So can't be that long.
I have a county meeting that morning from 10:30 to noon, but I'm available after that. I mean, do we want to do an early afternoon? Or do we want to wait because, you know, of Commissioner Goss and this situation? What do we want to do? But I feel like time is of the essence, and that is also why I really want to get this in. Even, you know, we are told we got to meet immediately, which obviously we have to get 18-hour notice. But I also feel like we need to get on this right away, because we need to get the search started. You know, the clock is ticking as soon as we accept his resignation.
Don't worry about me. I, you know, I'll try to be available for whatever time you set it. If you're going to do it on Thursday, though, probably later in the afternoon or in the evening is better for me, only from the standpoint that I may get discharged from the hospital on Thursday, you know, midday. And I'll be in the car trying to get home for the meeting.
Do we want to say like a 1 o'clock, or do we want to make it more like the lunchtime, like the noon hour, like, what do you want?
How about, how about we go Friday morning? Can we do Friday morning?
Yes, yes.
Sure. I can do that.
And that would be better for you, Commissioner Goss, as well?
Yes, it would.
Okay, I'd rather do something that's better for you, given the circumstances.
So what time? We're talking like 8:30 in the morning or something?
I am open. Is everybody else?
How about nine?
If we could do nine or 9:30, that would be better for me, but I'll make whatever work.
Yep.
Whatever works for you guys.
Let's, can we do, how does 9:00 AM sound then?
Perfect.
I'm weird, I like the even hours.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is all pending Nathan submits resignation in?
Correct.
Okay.
It is, it is not set in stone, because it will depend on that.
Right now.
I feel really comfortable with Friday. I think that day, that schedule would work out well. And I will communicate with you all as soon as I know for certain what's happening. But I think Friday is probably the best option for numerous reasons, so I appreciate you entertaining that idea.
I don't have nothing. I'm good, I'm good for Friday. Everybody else is?
Thank you for your consideration, commissioners and mayor.
Yes.
Gordon, we will work this around you, buddy. We got it.
Hey, you bring the donuts, buddy.
All right. Does anybody else have any other things to discuss before I go to public comment? Okay, well, we'll move ahead then. It is now time for public comment, if anybody has any public comments.
So Mayor and Commissioners?
Yes?
Don Taylor here, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. Just a couple of quick things. With regards to the naming of public property discussion earlier today, there's already been, as you know, a suggestion for one of those things to happen. And I just want to point out that there are some very inherent costs involved. And you should be clear who's going to pay for those, okay? That's all I have to say on that. And with regards to opening downtown, I'm all for this. But be careful about closing all the streets, or some of the streets, which have a tendency to make people stay away. Let's, as we do on First Friday, keep the streets open, well, for the most part, keep the streets open, and let everybody walk and do their thing. Sometimes we close them because of the car show. But let's make as many people comfortable about coming downtown and parking and going to those businesses as we can. So thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm going to allow a few more pauses here, in case anybody else. All right, I'm not hearing any other public comment. So may I get a motion to adjourn our pre-meeting?
So move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pre-meeting is closed. We will adjourn in seven minutes for our regular city commission meeting. Thank you. Okay, it now says that it's 7:00. So I call to order the May 18th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Goss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hill, with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Goss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Then it's approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move to pay the vouchers.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts, with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Goss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-078 is from Finance. It is a resolution confirming the special assessment rule for delinquent invoices, including a 10% penalty for late payment. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Robin, do you have the second from Commissioner Strayer?
Yeah, and Commissioner Gaus. Both of them actually second at the same time.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Gaus. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-079 is from Utilities. It is a resolution confirming the special assessment role for delinquent water and sewer charges, including a 10% penalty for late payment. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-080 is from Administration. It is a resolution to provide a water service connection to 4107 North Adrian Highway. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-081 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for chain link fencing at Island Park for a proposed dog park. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Gaus.
Um, it says it's a resolution to award a bid for chain link fencing at Island Park for a proposed dog park. Is this really proposed or have we already approved this? And if not, why are we building a fence on the chance that we're going to approve a dog park?
Nathan, do you want to weigh in on that one?
Yeah, our intention is that this is for a dog park. We had had several pre-meeting discussions and we got the okay to authorize this bid several months ago with the intention of building a dog park after we had looked at various locations. And so we can strike the word proposed if you'd like to make an amendment to it. But it is for a dog park. That's the only reason we're going to put a fence up.
No, I understand that, but I was just questioning. I knew we discussed it several times. I didn't know whether we got to the point where we actually approved it. And I guess my question is, if we haven't approved it, should we spending money, should we be spending money on the fencing? I mean, I, I, it doesn't matter one way or the other to me. I'm just, you know, I'm raising the issue about the wording.
I think from a staff perspective, we were under the impression that it had been approved through the previous communications that we had. And so that's why we moved on to bidding phase for the work that needed done. But if you feel like there's an additional step that we need to take, we're open to whatever. But I think that we moved on to bidding, thinking that we were in agreement on the project.
Well, and I think we are. I just, you know, again, I, I think we've pretty much approved it. And I'm not sure it should be proposed, that's all.
So you're just bringing the issue up of wording per se, more so that, or process for the dog park rather than actual, this actual resolution. Am I right, Gordon?
That's correct.
Mr. Gaus, okay.
So do we want to, do we want to amend the resolution to take out the word proposed?
I just let it go the way it is.
Leave it, you said? Okay.
Yeah, I say leave it. I don't want to create more work for Robin.
Okay. All right.
And just to be clear and reiterate what we discussed last week. These, this funding is going to come from the oil trust, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Watson. And we also will look to incorporate the idea of putting some signage up so that people know that it's coming from a special revenue source and not out of general taxes or anything like that. So we'll work on getting all that done.
And also to add to your point, Commissioner Watson, just so that the public is aware, this will actually be the first project that is coming from, from the oil and gas funding. So it, it's an exciting time. But I just want to reiterate that that trust is only to be used for capital improvements, environmental projects, and other special uses to benefit the citizens of the city of Adrian. And it cannot be used for operational expenses so that everyone is clear where, where this is coming from and why.
Thank you, that's a good reminder.
So I'm going to reread the resolution since we were, before I say who adopted, did the motion, sorry. So this was Resolution R 20-081 from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for chain link fencing at Island Park for a proposed dog park. The motion was given by Commissioner Hill with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-082 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the medical marijuana permits, MMG 19-014, MMG 19-015, and MMPR-002 for Flourish LLC for 1751 West Beecher Street, Adrian, Michigan. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-083 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the medical marijuana permit, MMP 18-004 for Main Street Products LLC for 1579 West Malmese Street, Adrian, Michigan. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus. Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-084 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the medical marijuana permit, MMP 19-024 for WPL Industries LLC for 1201 and 1209 East Beecher Street, Adrian, Michigan. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-085 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the medical marijuana permits, MMP 18-012, MMPR 18-004, MMG 18-008, MMG 18-009 for Zen Republic LLC for 1465 West Beecher Street, Adrian, Michigan. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move the adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hill with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Commissioners, do you have any comments on these reports? Now it is public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Jim Berryman, 676 Stonecrest.
Go ahead.
First. First, I'd like to, after the announcement last week that Mr. Bird was more than likely leaving the city of Adrian, going to Livingston County. I would like to personally thank Nathan for his service to the city of Adrian, his professionalism and his personality. A personality that is warm and welcoming. Nathan, thank you, and I wish you and the best of luck to you and your family.
Thank you.
Secondly, to the city commission. Our country, state, and city are experiencing, are experiencing the most unsettling times, probably the most unsettling times certainly in my lifetime. A pandemic that affects our health, our economy, our way of life. I wish all of you on the commission good luck in the seriousness of the collective deliberations and decisions you are going to undertake in the process of finding a new administrator, no matter who he or she may be. My hope is that you are able to find not only an individual that can lead, but also an individual that can inspire. Our times require it. Thank you. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
This is Scott Marvin, 148 Sand Creek Highway. Um, Adrian, I did try to call Chief Emrick, but I was unable to reach him and couldn't leave a voicemail. I'm very concerned about all of the drive-by shootings happening in the city in the last week. Safety is very important for all citizens. I sure hope we have enough police to investigate these shootings. And I wonder why these shootings are happening more often. Please keep us safe, and if you see something, say something. Thank you.
I'm not hearing anymore, so I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.